This eighty-two.
Eighty-two, let's say eighty-three dollars.
Even though, even though, even though, you still made eighty-two.
The salary line items are gonna take care of that one half.
Well, then I need a lot of money to raise the list.
Again, you're being the fourth trustee arguing that issue. You're making rules that the state is not requiring.
He doesn't require whatever.
Okay. How can this be answered?
I am not gonna sign a piece of paper until I know the money is there. Whether your comment is wrong or not, I am not signing the paper until I know that money is there.
Okay, so, if you say you know that, Mr. Mann?
Yeah.
So, moving on, next is departmental reports. Who's doing code enforcement department?
Trustees, you have your report from Mr. Tony McKee in your packets. So, if you wanted to do that now, or even following the meeting of his activities.
Okay, who's here, I tell them, I've had several phone calls, two actually. I have a few heading complaints, Captain Flag. It's called the old, I know it as Hibberts. It's probably called something else now, it was owned by, it was owned by another guy after the Hibberts. I don't remember his name, correct? Do you know what I'm about to carry out there on Farmersville, Carrollton, and Germantown?
I know the carryout there.
Okay. I had complaints of vagrants living in there, and I drive them down Route Four all the time. So, I stopped by there. This looks okay. Well, that, so I walked around the back of the building, and I got pictures on, I can produce you some pictures. If you guys wanna walk around the back of that building, it is completely open. Broken glass, it is obvious that people are living in, going in and out of that building. But I, why I want to bring up the zoning, Mr. Wolf, is can we not have our zoning, our zoning guy, if I remember the process correctly, he would write a letter to the owner, who I believe is Mr. Steve Rousch. He'd have to do the digging to find out who, who the owners.
Right.
He writes that owner a letter, because this is, that building is a safety hazard. If you're driving down the front, I've been around four, I've driven past it other times. I had, I get the first phone call, yeah, okay, whatever. I get a second phone call, so I drove behind it, and it's, it's bad. So, we need to start the process and getting that boarded up, and I think if I remember right, we send them a letter, give them the opportunity to do it. If they don't do it, then we do it, and we charge them. Can we start that process?
Yes. And then I will also have Mr. McKee stay in contact with you, so you know the process is.
It's, I think it's seventy-two oh eight, Germantown's mailing address.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, we looked at his report. Next is zoning department.
Same thing, you have the report in your packet, from John Calligan. It talks about the certificates he's issued, and how many calls he's taken, and also he's had correspondence with his BZA and zoning commission committees.
Okay, that's good. Any questions, guys, trustees? You have the report, you got, you got that Jim?
Yep.
Next one is road department.
First of all, we are kicking off our leaf collection program. There's copies on the back desk here. It's already been posted on the website for the township. We are also sending out copies to the residents that want them. And, and we have, just as done in the past two years, we have the entire community split into four zones, and, and we have two weeks of pickup throughout between now and December, where they'll be going through the neighborhood all week on the list of, of streets. And in the, on the flyer, it has all the streets, based on the, the quadrants of the township. One of the things we're also gonna do is for some of the areas that don't really do the leaf program, which is more the western, we're already looking at culverts, and digging out ditch culverts, to make sure that when the winter rains and the thawing and the, and the snow come, that those culverts try to drain right. So, we're gonna be doing kind of a two-fold project here, depending on the district that we're in that week. And this is, excuse me, this kicks off the third week of October, because next week we're doing a major cleanup on one thirty-one Lutheran Road. So, you have the report of what the crews have done, been doing, and it's six pages long of the activities at the road department. And today, the entire training staff went through a training with the stormwater, Montgomery County Soil and Water District staff, and we're beginning to evaluate our stormwater program at our two facilities, as well as the two fire stations.
Be open for questions, comments? Yeah, so, and I'm just throwing this out there, you know, I mean, on the farm, they live between the, between the means, and we've had conversations here, this meeting, about not having enough money in the road department for different things, and moving money around in the road department. And I signed a check for a, I mean, it was done, that paid the guy, that paid the contractor, but to repair, repair a leak in the radiator on the leaf back truck, it's not a truck, it's a trailer, but that thing's used, you know, several weeks out of the year. And that leak has been going on for years and years and years. You put a little water in it and go on. I think that three hundred plus dollars it was used to fix that could've been used better someplace else. I mean, I just, I just, I just wanted to try to, what's the cheapest way? What's the best way we can save our taxpayers money? And if we can just go another couple weeks, we, every time you start the thing up, you gotta put a little antifreeze or a little water in it, do so. You mean, and then there's also the thing, yeah, you want, you want to have the leak fixed, but I saw that check, and I just, I just throw that out there. So, no complaint, and just make a comment. Captain Flag, you're next.
Thank you, sir.
Hopeful?
All right, we had a busy month, September. Eight hundred eighty-four calls for service, five felony arrests, eleven misdemeanor arrests, fifty-four traffic stops, twenty-nine citations issued, responded to nine nine-one-one calls, forty-nine alarm checks, four assaults, eighteen domestic or TPO incidents. No driving intoxicated, I'm gonna contradict myself here on that one. Drug complaints, ten, dumping complaints, six. Fifty-one field interview cars completed. We had nine mental health-related calls, six named disputes, three overdoses. We responded to forty-nine suspicious subject situations or vehicles, and did twenty-one welfare checks. Overall, crime decreased by twenty-nine percent compared to the period of twenty nineteen. Our Part One violent crimes were down thirty-three percent over twenty nineteen. Part One property crimes decreased thirty-four percent. Our Two violent crimes went up eight percent. Crimes against society decreased fifty percent. And the most significant activity this month occurred in the Turker Flat in the area, Third Street along there, and back into the flat. In the Ohio Department of Public Safety, we hit seven crashes in Jefferson Township during September. Decreased to two crashes over twenty nineteen. One minor injury, two serious injury, four property damage. One of the crashes was alcohol and drug-related, and one of the crashes involved a hit-and-run. The reason that shows zero on the front there is because that is not charged. Offense yet, it's still waiting. Results from the crime lab to confirm impairment, and at that point in time, we'll, we'll issue citations through court, and it'll reflect a, a one when it comes up in the statistics. On September second, twenty twenty, approximately zero eight hundred, Second Watch Jefferson crews responded to that suspected OBI crash in the seven hundred block of South Diamond Mill Road. It is determined upon arrival that a southbound Chevrolet Equinox left the center, struck a northbound Dodge Ram pulling a utility trailer. The Equinox driver suffered injuries and was removed to N V H. The driver of the Dodge suffered no injuries, and that is where we expect to have some impairment come back at the blood work. So, it's, with the traffic services, you're due to the sheriff's office right now, waiting on those results. On Wednesday, September ninth, twenty twenty, approximately fourteen twenty-four hours, Second Watch Jefferson crews responded to an address in Aldridge, referenced a subject who'd come into contact with high voltage lines. Upon arrival, was discovered that Elliott Electrical Crews, a subcontractor for Dayton Power and Light, they were there working on the power lines. One of their employees was shocked while working on a line that had inadvertently been re-energized. Responding deputies found the subject unresponsive with Elliott and employees providing initial assistance. Deputies utilizing their AED began CPR, delivered four rounds of CPR and four shocks from the AED. Medics responded to the scene, took over. When they removed the subject, he had a, he had a pulse. We followed up with the subject, he was released a five-week later from the hospital, so he looking, looking good to survive that incident. On Friday, September eleventh, at zero zero fourteen hours, we went out to Napoleon's at forty-one fifty Germantown Pike on the report of a shooting. Upon arrival, we located an individual in the parking lot of the establishment that had been shot. Medics responded, and the individual was pronounced dead at the scene. Forensic services and special investigation callouts were initiated. They developed some possible suspect information at the scene, and they began working to locate the individual. At approximately twelve thirty hours on the eleventh, in the afternoon at this point, the suspect was located at his residence in Jefferson Township and taken into custody without incident, and charges had been filed for that homicide through the Ohio Police Court. On September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, Third Watch Jefferson crews responded to fifty-nine ninety-six Germantown Pike, two bombs on the report of a shooting. Upon arrival, deputies learned the two patrons had become involved in a dispute over a parking spot at the rear of the establishment. One of the two went and retrieved the firearm and returned to the scene of the confrontation. They, they had another confrontation, the second individual pulled a firearm. They exchanged gunfire, both subjects were hit. One was removed from the scene with injuries considered non-life threatening. The other was removed from the scene in critical condition. Special investigations and forensic services, callouts were initiated again, and that one remains under investigation. Last check, both were still in the hospital, one was still in serious condition. Over the month of September, environmental crimes generated six new cases involving illegal dumping. That subject who we arrested and presented charges on for the illegal tire dumping on South Lansdown, those charges were accepted, and he is going to the, that is being presented at the grand jury later this month. The legal dumping initiative for the month of September provided evidence to generate three workable cases, one of which was a named suspect, so I'm giving a little return on that investment. I made contact with the city of Dayton, I know we've had some complaints about the old YMCA on Dayton Liberty there near Route Four. We're coming down to try to get some cameras over that location to help us be able to generate some suspect leads there. They don't even pull around in the back of the building anymore, it's just, you know, dumped in the front lot. They're in and out, so we're gonna go to Dayton, see what they're gonna do to assist that, since that's technically in their jurisdiction, however, you know, they have the biggest camera program around, so hoping we can get something out there shortly, and do some kind of follow-up and curtail some of that. We continue to work with this Family Dollar up here on Third Street. The general management advise they are gonna get a new vendor for their waste disposal, and have them come and secure dumpsters, at which time they plan to clean up the tree line going back into the apartments, and rectify that situation where that trash is just out blowing all over the thoroughfare there. And they're gonna keep that clean and maintained once they have their new dumpsters in place. No roads were cleaned up in Jefferson during September, as we feel on a shutdown, taking any workers out. I received no Crime Stoppers tips for anything in Jefferson for the month of September. And then, just for those that may have seen it, I've seen a couple things coming out on social media, but this afternoon, the larger police presence was again at another funeral. This started in Trotwood. They had a altercation at a church where a funeral was being held, where weapons were brandished and possibly fired inside the church, inside the church. Trotwood dropped a ninety-nine at that location, so Montgomery County from, you know, agencies from all over, Montgomery County responded to that. And then, once there, we learned that that procession was coming into the township for Jefferson Youth Cemetery, so that's, that's what resulted there. And once we got down to the township, we had very few issues, just mostly traffic-related, and got them in, they held the service straight aside, and then left for an event following the funeral, which, to my understanding, has gone without any issues at night, so that's hopefully over. Questions, please?
Can I ask you a question?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. I didn't hear, you were talking about the incident on North, on South Diamond Mill, September the second. Was that a fatality? I, I didn't hear what you said.
No, it was a serious injury.
A serious injury.
But it was the driver that was at fault, so it was not a big hazard.
Okay.
It was just a suspected impairment.
Thank you.
Trustee?
Yes, that's right, you said that the city, that, I know it is, but you said the city of Dayton for the, whatever they're calling it now. I've noticed that for weeks, there are someone said, we need to be accountable, I know it's the city of Dayton. How are we involved, especially if you're contacting the city, right?
The only involvement was that I was catching heat for it.
Yes.
So, I made the call because we do have deputies assigned to that program for the entire county, so.
So, anybody who has issues should be calling the city of Dayton.
Correct, yes. I told them I'm gonna provide them a buffer for a short period, then.
Because the building is horrible, the trees need to be cut, I mean, the whole area, it's just not the best thing.
Yeah, I was, I was sitting in that lot a couple weeks ago, when Dayton Police responded out there, because they were, they had come out on alarm. So, they received an alarm from the school, the old charge school. There's no power, anything in there, the place is cut, the ceilings are ripped down, I don't know how an alarm came in, but we went in to check the place, and it's, it's in bad shape.
So, anybody that has any suggestions, can I have that too?
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I've been at the meeting, we just get questions on that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Captain Flag.
You're welcome, sir.
Uh, the fire department is next? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To be frank, there's one neighbor that will be here and ask me to present this thing. First of all, Captain Flag, thank you for your deputies. It seems like every time we have some of these serious UDL members, like two or three to one. So, we really appreciate your crews showing up, keeping us safe, following us, and for that. This month, since the last meeting, worked on paying bills, and boy, there are, there I used to just do core, you know, some IP things, but now I'm doing EMS and utilities, and it is, it's quite overwhelming sometimes. Miss Edwards has been helpful in getting me, gave me up to speed on these. Responded to some emails as usual each month. Had a meeting with community management a couple weeks ago to discuss further the email. They're working with Mr. Wolf to develop a method, a memo of understanding where it is. Both friends are medics, if you happen to see one sitting out there when they came in. They've returned from Texas. They've been up Dinglewood, had their lettering all put on. One is currently, had to get into the Dayton garage this morning, they have its rate, mobile radio installed and its exhaust system coupling for the exhaust system out here. Either today, or tomorrow, or the next day, we'll swap, swap them out, bring that one back and take the other one in. E-one, which is a fire engine manufacturer, Rosenbauer, and a couple of others were here this past two weeks bringing their, their waders by, showing us the engine tankers. So, we've had a good, good selection to choose from, chief's in the process of specifying one. I'm sure I'll present that to you shortly here. The new chief's vehicle is at Huber Heights right now, Katie Rose is getting its emergency lights and sirens put on. It'll be, they're going to Dinglewood to get lettering on it, and it should be here, we're guessing, about two weeks. Resolution, trustees just brought in seven new firefighters, and you two, we appreciate that. Station maintenance, the usual, daily chores being completed. Got some weeding issues going on. Trustee, Avon, were you still going by and screening that?
Nope.
Yeah, fifty-nine's up in bad shape, and so we've been out there trying to pull them, but those have come back so fast.
Martin bought, you bought, you bought a bunch of teleshootings, running, it's been a lot of spray area and all that, you gonna do it?
I don't have a license.
So, why'd you buy the stuff?
Well, you had a licensed employee at the time.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. EMS, continuing QA, QI on EMS runs and our online education every Wednesday. The crews are doing shift training, as far as fire training, every shift. Vehicle maintenance, Engine sixty is down at the Dayton Fire Garage for its general maintenance and repair issues. And we just brought fifty-nine back, Engine fifty-nine had a rear differential go out on it, and they were able to salvage that with a reminder repair. Fifty-nine also had its Blitz, Blitz fire nozzle installed, that was done in-house, so we saved those funds for a resident firefighter mechanic, he installed that. Now, all fire engines have the Blitz fire, that's that big giant blue nozzle in the back that we quickly can deploy, and it's almost like a jet gun up on top, but it's on the ground. So, that's, they're all fired up for that now. Quartermaster, that's me, I've got three new, new hires that were uniformed. I recovered uniforms back and checked in the two employees that resigned recently. And retired seventeen pieces of equipment, some of them that were two and a half years old, the original sets we got just before the fair, if you remember. Communications, I worked with the IT vendor, got new accounts for the new hires and closed accounts for the firing members. Also worked with Emery, this was very, very productive, worked every dime when they were here last week. I got the phone tree cleaned up, now when you call into the main number, you have an option very early on, if you know the party, extension of the party you're trying to reach. Bank, 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 so having to get through all the different departments to get to the person you want to speak. So, that was very helpful. Plus, out here on the sign, we have had nine-three-seven-two-six-two-three-five-eight-zero. It's been down for a few months here. The technician was able to route that line, it was just setting up a ringing knaller, into the building here, and rings with my office and the chief's office, so that you can get ahold of someone. The fact, that number's been on the ladder heads, business cards, dispatchers, Paul's Outdoing Equipment. Could not get ahold of us for three weeks, and our chainsaw blade was in, because everyone had that number, so. So, as soon as it was turned on, within a half hour, Jennifer called me, let me know that my extended warranty was up on my car. First calling up. Fire prevention, three inspections were performed last week, and today, one of our inspectors went out and made contacts with several businesses, updating contact information. Of course, payroll is done, we have the new clock-in, clock-out method, it's going well, they're adjusting well. Three people were interviewed last week and this week, three are starting orientation, one tomorrow and two on Friday, and we have three people waiting to come in to be interviewed. One pending fire report, once Miss Edwards clears that, we'll quickly release that to them. And two of our people that were coming in for interviews called and backed out because of testing positive for COVID nineteen. So, they're on quarantine right now until they, they start feeling better, we cannot see one another. Any questions, trustees?
I have a question. What's this pending fire report I'm supposed to do with? I don't know that.
I put it in your box.
I don't know that.
Last week.
You gave me five dollars?
That was it.
So, I've never involved with, I've never been involved with the fire stuff because of, like I said before, it was, it told me about Hibbert, that you did correct me on the fire.
Yeah, this was just fire.
Right, and I've never been involved in any of the fires, so I think you can go ahead and do whatever you do.
Also, I was given to shoot them to you.
Yeah, I get them for the record, but I never did anything to stop you from going ahead and doing what you need to do.
Well, I, I'm supposed to get permission from you that everything's down on your side, and you let me know, and then I contact them and they can come to you.
I guess on my side, all you can do is sign a piece of check, and once you tell me that you provided them the report.
I don't provide them until it's down on your side. We'll, we'll claim that, we'll get that straight.
But yeah, we need to talk, talk that, but I also have another question. Who does, okay, you're the quartermaster. Who does EMS now?
Paying bills?
It says EMS, I didn't know.
Which part are you talking about?
It says EMS here on your report.
QA, QI? That QA and QI was done by paramedic lieutenant Fuker. He's the one that's been checking the, the run reports.
Okay.
And then continuing education is done by premier health. All the departments in the Miami Valley get online every Wednesday, like at nine AM. And it's, it's a Zoom meeting, is basically what it is. So, there's a doctor giving, giving you presentation, and then afterwards, you go to a work site and take a test, and then if you pass it, you get continuing education. So, that's provided by premier.
That's an HR report, that's in the HR.
Which ones are this one?
HR report.
I'm just saying that, that's my area for the, the clock-in, payroll, the scheduling, and the interviews I do, the interviews for the chief for all the hires.
And then the top person in the report, working on paying bills, is bound to emails, is that the chief, is that?
Uh, paying bills is me, responding emails could be either of us. But I'm done, I'm pretty well done on all of those.
Who does fire training?
Fire training is the captain, Wyler. He is, he is out of hours for the year, did the fifteen hundred hour rule, but he is volunteering on his own time to create the, the different fire trainings and emailing everyone to get online to these sites, and typically, take the video presentation and do, do the test. Trustees? Thank you.
Thank you, B C. Mr. Race, your report next, Mr. Wolf?
Trustees, you have my six-page report here, and I'm not going to put you to sleep to read most of the activities I have. You covered a lot of the big projects tonight, and, and I thank you very much on the fire grant to the two-point-O. That's very important. So, you can read through that, if you have any questions after tonight, you definitely call me, email me, any, any way to communicate with me about questions you might have in that report. In your packet, you had, they, we received an invitation from the special event chairperson, Bootsie, Bootsie Neal. Their church, the Mount Enan Missionary Baptist Church is having an Apollo night. Because of COVID, it's all gonna be online, but their invite, they, she called me today and asked me to invite you as trustees and fiscal officer to join them online, either through Zoom, or YouTube, or Facebook, for the event on the twenty-third of October. And, and the money is to support youth, it's a youth fundraiser, so I wanted to bring that attention because of Bootsie's call. Next thing is, I received an email today, each of you should have it in your email box, but this is a copy. Annually, once a year, Montgomery County engineer is required by Ohio revised code to hold a meeting with elected township trustees in person, or now with COVID, you know, by electronic. So, they have set the date for the meetings. It's each, each of you need to find a way to get online to attend that meeting, and it's, and it's part of the requirement that the engineer has to have participation from the township trustees. It's normally held in person down at the, the engineer's club downtown, but because of COVID, they're going to try it online. So, I want to bring that up to your attention as well. I'm proud of all these department managers and all these people that work here, and I want to say a shout-out to everyone, including our, our deputies and our, our captains here. There's a lot of work to be done, and they continue to do it. Firefighters are amazing, what they've been doing lately around here, and then to see the people applying to come to work here is incredible. The paramedic, a well-known paramedic that has the COVID, that has to wait now to come, is a very well-known paramedic. So, we're excited for the future, and I just wanted to shout out to everybody, every individual worker that works here, just to say I'm proud of them, because without the people doing the work every day, the work doesn't get done. That's the end of my report.
I have a question, Mr. Wolf, can I ask? Mr. Wolf, on number three, work for Dayton, some days, your public paperwork. I received a check from Mr. Mann, David, uh, June? I just got it in October, but I don't have any, um, I deposited a check, but I don't know where you got that from, including, you give me paperwork, or, or, unless you, you have paperwork for process paperwork with S E S grant, which is, they're doing both for the county, etc. So, I don't have any paperwork for where to put that check.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll respond to that question or that statement. The Dayton Foundation gave every community five hundred dollars to use toward expenses to. to try to gather higher numbers for census. So Mr. Man, being that he oversaw the census collection process, had this check. We didn't know what to do with it. Then Mr. Man came to you, Tracy, and asked for a, a check to be able to buy gift cards. And we've sent four, spent four Saturdays, or Fridays and Saturdays, down at the grocery, enrolling people and getting their census count, and if they did, they got, they got a gift card. I was working with the foundation on a questionnaire that they asked us to fill out about the things that we did in the community. We submitted a balance sheet to them that, you know, the hourly wages, or whatever it might've been, plus the gift cards totaled up more than $500. So what I'll do for you, Tracy, is I'll get whatever the Dayton Foundation issues to you. Now, it's a $500 check, so are you asking about where to deposit it?
So first of all, there was a bunch of, of Mr. Man coming to me to ask me for a check for gift cards. I've never got that message, I was aware that got lost somewhere. So, that I'm not clear, where, where that is. I know you guys talked about gift cards, giving gift cards away, but I was never asked if I'd be the text for a gift card. So I'd like to correct that.
So I'll give you a thought? I don't know.
Secondly, yes, I need to know, I deposited a check in the bank, and I need to know where you're gonna be putting that money, and who boxes gift cards, who do I have to reverse?
I purchased the card.
Okay, so I need to reverse you, Father, now?
But I, I'll get with you, I'll give you a little list.
Okay. So, then I guess the next thing is, Mr. Wolf was there, have to tell me, or Mr. Man, you and Mr. Wolf have to tell me what revenue fund you want me to put that in, and what appropriation you want me to take that money out of. Whether the revenue fund to put it in, appropriation for that, you want it to be moved over to take that money out.
We can do that, Wolf. It's just you, look at you right now, and I'll figure it out. Unless you've got numbers.
You good?
I think so, they're giving affirmation, otherwise they're put there until, maybe it's put there until they give me that. I can't, I can't appropriate to you, Mr. Man, until I get that affirmation.
I'll, I'll get with you.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Next is comments by citizens, and so, just a general comment, when the person, this resident is speaking, they have three minutes to talk, and, I'm probably thinking, everything, just watch the clock. And nobody else can be speaking, so we must contain, contain order. Order. And Linda Brawley, you're next, so as you come up to the-